Ms. Kent said she may have to, she says she gonna be on as long as she can, but she have to move.
Okay, alright, gotcha, okay, alrighty. Good enough? I see they got the monument up.
They did. And we'll add a moat, a border, and solar lights tomorrow.
They're gonna unveil next Sunday, this, this Sunday.
Coming up, yep, we'll have it all dressed up.
Okay, thank you, appreciate you. Alrighty, Dino, you doing alright, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright, that's Evelyn. Alright, well, we're about ready. Okay, so Dee, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Okay. Alright, we're about ready? Would the regular meeting of the Edgecombe County Board of Education, November 8, 2021, please come to order to honor social distancing related to the coronavirus pandemic? The public may attend meetings per capacity of 25. In-person attendance will be on a first-come basis. Public, however, may view the board meetings through the YouTube Edgecombe County Public Schools as listed. Let me say that Members Scott, Kent, and Worsley will be joining us virtually tonight. Please stand and join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Item two, approval of the agenda. Dr. B, are there any additions or deletions?
Uh huh, I have some of those. So we would table Policy 6560, disposal of surplus property that's under 7.1.1.
Okay.
And if we will add 8.6B, approval of the 21, 22 ECPS traditional schools and Edgecombe Early College High School and Eyes on School Calendar addendum. 8.7B, approval of contract between the Edgecombe County Board of Education and Progressive Design Collaborative. 8.8B, approval to authorize Board Chair Raymond Privet and Superintendent Dr. Valerie H. Brizes to sign contracts for designing fees up to $500,000.
And would you please add at 3.2, under recognition, and 12.1 unveiling of monument? 12 point, uh, 3.2, recognition, and 12.1 unveiling of the monument. Any others? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
No motion, no we have several.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
It has been a motion in second that the agenda as printed be, printed and amended be received and accepted. You heard that motion in second. Any unreadiness or questions? And those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melis, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Nellie Worsley, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Marvel Scott is probably traveling. That ayes have it and that motion carried. Item 3.1, recognition, Employee of the Month.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Board Chair, Members of the Board, Secretary of State Dr. Bridges. I'm excited to introduce to you our ECPS Employee of the Month for November. Jeremy Johnson is technically the 6th grade ELA Social Studies teacher at Martin Millennium Academy. However, according to MMA Principal Kellyanne Mudd, he is so much more and always goes beyond his technical duties. MMA started the year without a 7th grade teacher, and on his own, Mr. Johnson designed a solution in which he could teach both 6th and 7th grades. Some days, when the school was able to secure, secure a sub, he taught both grades using technology. However, he really stepped up to the plate when they weren't able to secure a sub, and he offered to teach both grades together in the auditorium. This was completely his idea, as he is committed to making sure the students and their learning come first. In addition to his design thinking solutions during this time, he always serves as a role model to all MMA students. He makes a point to get to know all students of all ages and works to support them through social, emotional, and academic challenges. Congratulations to our ECPS Employee of the Month, Jeremy Johnson.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir, wonderful.
And, and as always, I have a gift card from State Farm Insurance Agent Greg Sessons.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, thank you.
Yes, indeed. Okay, thank you, sir. Dr. B, just stay right there for me, please. Part of the 3.2 that I have, I had the privilege a couple of weeks ago to attend an evening under the stars at NC State University. At that time, they recognized the School of Education along with the other schools and departments. But the School of Education recognized an outstanding member of the college distinguished alumni. Dr. B was privileged to receive one of those awards from the School of Education at NC State University. And that's what her husband did. Congratulations, Dr. B.
Thank you.
Wonderful, yes, indeed. Number four, the public comments, the seat is blank, so we'll move along from there. And we move now to number five, approval of open session minutes. We have several. First being September 13, 2021, the Board Work Session Open Minutes Meeting. Any questions or comments there? Hearing none, we hear, need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I offer motion that we approve our work session minutes of September 13, 2021.
Mr. Ellis, you've heard the motion in second for the approval of the September 13, 2021 Board Work Session Open Minute Meetings, Meeting Minutes. Heard that second and approval in second. Those in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Opposers like sign, ayes have it. And since we have virtual, state your name and say aye, those in favor.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melis, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Nellie Worsley, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And Marvel Scott is probably traveling. You've heard that, that motion pass. September 13, 2021, regular business board meeting, open session minutes. Any corrections or deletions in those? Hearing none, do we hear motion?
Mr. Chairman, I offer motion that we approve our regular meeting minutes of September 13, 2021.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Motion by Board Member Kent, heard that motion in second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, state your name and say aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melis, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Nellie Worsley, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion, those in, that motion passed. October 18, 2021, public hearing and regular business board meeting, open session minutes. Any questions or deletions or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, do we hear motion?
I have a comment on this.
Yes, ma'am.
If we look at the, ooh, second paragraph.
Okay.
I believe it stated that Devon Hogrove at North Edgecombe High School and another person passed because of COVID-19 pandemic. And it's my understanding from his family
Right.
that Devon Hogrove got shot.
He did.
He died from a shot.
It was a murder.
That's on the correct.
Alright, any other corrections? Hearing none, do we hear motion?
Offer motion that we approve our public hearing and regular meeting, October 18, 2021.
Second.
Johnson, second. You've heard that motion in second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melis, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Nellie Worsley, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion carried. Item 6.1, school updates, Dr. Bridges.
Yes, you should have handouts at your table. I just quite a few sheets, but want to go over these with you quickly. The first one is promoting school wellness, and you all received a couple emails about some, some dates that we were looking at for professional learning. We also recognize that our staff needs some, some wellness activities. And so, November 22nd and 23rd, we're gonna use those as professional learning days for all staff and students. We will also embed in those professional learning days some wellness activities. In addition to that, we're planning to provide some non-perishable items for families that will be in need the week before Thanksgiving to assist with any food insecurities. Attached to this document, you'll see a letter from Eric Davis. He's the Board Chair of Education and Allison Shaver, General Counsel for State Board. There are a couple of things in the letter that I just want to bring to your attention. We received this letter on October 29 via email, and it just kinda, guess, gives a warning to boards around using school days and designating them as mental health days. And so, we did read this as a wellness team. We talked through what this meant for us and how we wanted to make sure that, one, we were adhering to the law, but also recognizing that our students and staff did need some space and time for professional development as wellness. But we are really promoting the professional development and making sure that we provide them two days worth of professional development. Now, as we think through our school years, not just this year, but over the years, our staff often need additional professional development. And we thought this would be a great time to somewhat do, do both of the items. So if you look on the, on the back of the sheet, I just want to bring your attention to one paragraph that caught our attention. Individuals may be permitted to take leave or work from home or workdays, but they must be paid leave or actual working in order to be paid. They go on to talk about specific positions, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, maintenance, that these folks would be difficult for them to be able to perform their work not at work. And so, again, we created, and you'll see a one-pager that looks like this. We created a document so that each of these work groups will have job-related professional development. And I can certainly send you additional information so that you could go in and you can click on the modules, you can click on the information and the activities that will be at their disposal. This is two days' worth of professional development specifically related to their work. And so, we wanted to make sure that you all, one, have the letter that shared the information and the concern that might be kinda going throughout the state, but also had our schedule of what we're doing to make sure that we are aligned to the expectations and making sure that, that our attorney was aware. So I did reach out to her to share what we, what our plans were and what that would look like for, for our staff members. So again, just wanted you to be aware, to see that, see if you had questions. And if folks reached out to you with questions, you had, you had that information to say what we were doing, why we were doing it, and what that looked like. Further, and it's not on this sheet, but it's on some additional sheets, we, we have a column that lets us know how will we kinda document what's going on. So some of this documentation will come from assessments that staff members will have to have, take as a completed module. Some of it will be kind of a checkoff sheet that they're sharing with their principal or with their department head if they're part of central office. So they will kinda work through some of those. Now, if a teacher decides, I really don't want to do these items, maybe I'm doing some other things and I don't want to participate, they can certainly take those two days off. But those two days are the Monday and Tuesday, the week of Thanksgiving break. And I, again, just wanted to make sure you were, were aware of what we were doing, why we were doing it, and how we were making sure that it was aligned to our strategic plan. So you have a copy of that. I'll keep going down.
Could I ask you one question right, quite right, that? So, if they get those two days off during that week, could they take the whole week off?
Absolutely. And they don't have, so I'll, I'll make a correction. It's, it's not technically two days off. They are working remotely, they're working on the modules. They may be doing some lesson planning, they may be doing a number of things that their principal may assign them to do. But these work-specific groups, we felt like we needed to capture exactly what they were gonna be doing because they were addressed in the letter, and we, we didn't want anyone to think that we were not following yet. But actually, it would be the week of Thanksgiving. Yes, ma'am. Other questions?
Other question?
Okay, I'm gonna keep going. And then if you look at the last paragraph, right above school health updates, you've noticed that November 12, and when Susan shares, she'll be sharing two requests for calendar changes. It won't be November 22nd and 23rd, that's that Monday and Tuesday. She will share that change. This other change that we've looked at as recently as today was changing this Friday to a teacher work day. And the reason why we've looked at that is because when we look in the system, we're seeing our numbers tick up of staff members that need to be off. And so, some of the name, the numbers in the system won't hit the system because they don't need a sub. But we also had Ms. Pittman reach out to all of our department heads that are not a part of a school system and find out who's, who'll be here on the 12th, which is a Friday, and who won't. Now, the reason why these numbers are so high is because the 11th is a holiday, which is a Thursday, and then that Friday is the 12th. And so, when we looked at that, we really became alarmed, the number. I think the last time we looked was 21, we're now up to 64 that are in the system, and we expect those to continue to grow. About 50% of central office staff across our district have put in leave time for the 12th. And we just felt like being able to acquire subs and manage schools safely was not a good idea if we would have hit number of staff members out. So the 12th will also be something that, as Susan has shared, the calendar updates, that we're asking for a teacher work day for the 12th. So just wanted to bring that to your attention and make sure you were clear about that. Okay? The next item is school health update, and this is our district contact tracer. And so, we're really excited to have Mr. Braxton come on board for our district. As a contact tracer, he's worked in a number of roles throughout ECPS through, over the years. So his primary role will be to help all aspects of contact tracing. Takes a lot of time. Some of our principals have had to really do a lot of that work or ask staff members to kinda work with the health department and run that down. And so, we'll have someone who's dedicated to that. And I'm sure we'll find some other things as we move along that fit under that category of him helping and supporting some of our COVID things that are going on in our district. So again, glad to have him on board. On the back of your sheet, you'll see some vaccine and booster clinics. And so, we know that students ages 5 through 11 can now begin to get, be vaccinated. And so, we have the following dates and the following locations. You see them listed there. We have Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, November 15, 16, and 17. And you see the three schools that they'll be located at. And this will be from 4 to 7. And of course, there are some, some kind of parameters there. When you parent a guardian, parents will bring ID and student's insurance card. And so, those we will provide for our students. We did not have a high percentage of interest, but we still felt like we needed to provide that for the, the parents that were interested. In addition, we have a booster clinic for our staff members that will happen on November 10 at Tarver High School from 3 to 6 p.m. And then the last thing you'll see on this sheet is the mask mandate. Now, you know, each month, we have to vote to uphold our mask mandate. So I just, again, wanted to bring that to your attention. And as you're looking at that, you see our one-pager with the COVID dashboard, and it gives our numbers. And our new student cases, and we do this each week, new student cases, three, new staff cases, one. So we're moving in the right direction. You see our percent is very low, but that's, again, that's where we are. And each month, we have to make a decision if we're gonna continue with the mask mandate. I'll stop there and see if there are any questions regarding school updates.
Any questions? Members Worsley and Kent and Scott, any questions?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Dr. B, one, one, one question. The non-perishables can be picked up and we can actually donate as well?
I think that Dr. Battle would love that. So if you want to do that, I'll, can have her connect with you. She and Susan are kinda working on that.
Okay.
We wanna make sure that we're giving, giving them to people who have a need. I think they're reaching out to each school to ask like how many families and what the need will look like. What we're trying to do, we, we can't take care of the whole week, but we wanna make sure that we provide some support as needed. But I'll ask her to, to reach out and share that information.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
6.2, maintenance update, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Secretary of State Dr. Bridges, fellow board members. Just a few updates as it relates to maintenance. First, the hot water pump that we talked about last meeting for North Edgecombe, it still has not come. So, from what we understand from tracking, it's sitting in Virginia at a dock. Worst-case scenario, we're gonna probably have to make a field trip and go get it for install. It keeps saying pending, 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 but it's just a matter of getting things shipped to us. We're not in a dire spot where we don't have any heat, but we don't have adequate heat in the main building at North. So we haven't hit that cold spell where we're gonna need it, but we don't want to wait until we have that, that spell and then not have enough heat. Alright, boiler at Phillips, we still have not received that. That one's pending as well. But we do still have the nine classrooms with heat, which is adequate for what we're operating with for a classroom size. I did meet with Mr. Berry and Ms. Phillips last week, and we're gonna add five additional heat pumps in the window till we get the actual boiler in the building. That would take care of everybody's classroom, except for the main building. We do not have any windows that we could remove in the main, in the main building for the main office section. So we're gonna have to set up some type of temporary office if worst-case scenario, we do not get this boiler in time for the cold weather to come in. We still have those West Edgecombe carrier units that are still on back order. They're not giving us a date now on those. But that just only affects the media center at West. Access control. So we finally got it up and running at Patillo. We've got three doors now that we've actually did away with key access. And we actually have the swipe, swipe badges now for the staff members to use to enter and exit the building. We have two more doors to do, and that'll take care of the whole perimeter of the building. But we started out with the three. So as you can see, those are the swipe, you just walk up to it and it buzzes you in. Also, Martin Academy, we also installed the three over at, at the school there. They were issued their badges this past Friday. So I think the school has already started distributing those. So we're trying to get our security up to par where we don't have to have all these keys that are easily duplicated. And then once these people leave, or anybody decides to leave, we don't, we don't get those keys back. So now, it's just as simple as, hey, they no longer work here. We go into the computer, we kill the badge. So it's not, and those badges are not free or cheap for us. So we are charging for replacements. Now, damaged one, we understand. But when you just keep losing keys and swipes, like those, those badges cost us $20 a cord. So it could add up really quickly for people not turning them in. But it's a great thing to have, we can track the footprint of that person throughout the building, what time they come in, what time they leave. uh, what time they come in, what time they leave, what doors they went in. Also, um, we can track, like if it's a teacher card, and the principal only wants them to have access from 6 o'clock in the afternoon, or in the morning, till 6 o'clock in the evening. So after 6 o'clock, that badge will not work anywhere in that building. But you can have administrative card where it works 24 hours. Uh, custodians have 24-hour access. So it's just a matter of what the principal wants or who they want to have access. But it just gives us a footprint of who's in and out of that building and what time they're accessing the building. All right, so a few more informations. We still have the Carver roof materials on, uh, back order. Uh, we're doing the best, we're pressuring B and N to try to get their, get here and get that fixed, but it's just hard to get those roofing materials now. Uh, still, uh, as soon as, uh, the cooling season is out, which is probably after this week, uh, we'll start replacing the 300 hall at Coker. We received those units last week. Uh, they're sitting in our shop floor. So as soon as we get back for Thanksgiving, we'll start taking those out. Uh, the kindergarten building, we're still waiting on those, those units to come in. Uh, West, we have six air handlers we gotta take out of that building. We're gonna take that week of Thanksgiving, and we're gonna work those seven days. Uh, we'll be, have a guy on call coming to open and close in the building. But we're gonna take that time right there and take advantage of that to get those air handlers out of the hallway so we don't disrupt class. Uh, metal recycling, we're, we're actually on the, doing really well with that. Uh, we got two bins that are shopping now that we're actually crushing metal. So once we get the first ship, we'll, we'll share what we're receiving back so that we have an idea of how, what we're doing with the money as we're receiving it back. Uh, last one is the Tarver High electrical switch gear. Uh, we talked about that, where the breakers are no good in that system. And if those breakers go out, we don't have a replacement. So we put it out for bid, but we only have one company to bid on it. Uh, contracts are swamped right now. And with the timeline we're gonna have to be able to get that, sit that, uh, switch gear out, we only had one company that felt like they could do it. So we had to put it back out for rebid. Uh, PDC is taking care of that for us. So we'll, uh, if we don't get the bids a second time, we'll just have to consult with our attorney to figure out, are we okay to move forward with the one? Being that we put it out a second time, we may not have gotten, uh, any response.
Right.
Uh, so here we are with our ESSR contracts, uh, as far as the air conditioning replacements. So North Edge Cone and Carver was 445, 823. Southwest Edge Cone's chiller was 372,000. Uh, Carver window replacement was 419,000. That's all the aluminum windows around the whole campus. Uh, West Middle School window, that's all those aluminum windows, that was 481,280. Stock's chiller, we just got that back, uh, Friday, was 420,890. And the Tarver High air handler units, which are those big units you see on top of Tarver High that are rusted out, those are the ones we're talking about here, they're 347,479 dollars. And the Patillo chiller was 332,458 dollars. So we're almost at $3 million just in chillers and windows. We have not started with most of the air handlers that are inside of the building, um, that actually push the air, uh, to the individual classroom. So we're going through the money, you know, pretty fast. Uh, but the good thing is, we're not like some of the other districts that waited, and now they're in line to get these chillers. Ours is actually being built as we speak. So we hope to have them shipped to our campuses by February. Um, and as, as February, once we get them here on campus, then we'll start making the process of changing these out. So we have about just 2.8, well over 2.8 million under contract at this current time. And that's the end of this presentation. Any questions?
Mr. Williams, the last time we reported about some TikTok de- destruction. Uh, how was that? Is it still happening?
Very minimal. Uh, it subsided a, a, a whole lot. Um, I think a lot of the stuff was, we stopped replacing a lot of the stuff inside the bathroom to kind of deter it. And, uh, principal did a great job of coming up with a monitoring schedule, uh, for the bathroom. So that kind of deterred it. Uh, the only thing we're seeing now is not so much destruction, but it's the waste of paper tiles and tissue. So it's kind of hard to monitor that because you have to have somebody actually inside the space. But as far as the destruction of the stalls, the sinks, um, the soap dispensers, that has gone down to minimal.
I actually thought about that all the way home, uh, from the last minutes, meeting. As it has to be a lot of, it, it does a lot of, uh, when you rip something out, people are gonna hear that.
I, I agree. I agree. Those stall doors are most of the time either wood or metal. So when people start swinging and beating them, you would hear it hit, or you pull that metal off of the wall, you would think it would make a loud noise.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I appreciate what you're doing, sir, and your staff.
Thank you.
6.3 fundraisers, Dr. B?
Yep, there's, um, one fundraiser, it was Carver. It was, um, T-shirts, 15 to 30 dollars for November 12th. Um, and again, just items for information. If there are questions, please stop me.
Questions?
No.
Okay. 6.4.
For four, you'll see the trips. These are extended days. You see Tarver High School in North. Those are those are volleyball games, Oakley-Lenderly. Um, you see some dates here for actual school touring. If you miss law, the 11th is, uh, was written in era. That is a holiday, so they won't be after-school touring on the 11th. And then talk two for Tarver High School. Um, you see a marching band and then a drill competition for JROTC.
Okay.
Any questions regarding those?
Questions?
No.
Okay.
Uh, Kent, Worceley, and Scott, questions?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, 6.5.
6.5, those are contracts. I'll ask Mr. Williams if he'll come forward and just share 6.51, 6.52, 6.53, and 6.54. See if you have any questions as far as those contracts.
A good evening again, Mr. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, fellow board member, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. Uh, just wanted to review some of the contracts that we, uh, had signed prior, um, after the last board meeting. Uh, last board meeting, we asked for special permission for contracts to be able to be signed by Dr. Bridges and, uh, Reverend Privet, uh, so that we can continue to work, um, spending our ESSR funds. Uh, so we actually had about four contracts that we had, um, um, take place after the meeting. Uh, the first was between, uh, the Board of Education and RA Mechanical to replace the chiller at Patillo. Um, I don't think we have a picture of that one, but, um, this one here was 332,000 dollars, 450, 3,030, 3,32,458 dollars. Uh, this will replace the one chiller that sits next to the dumpster. There's two chillers there. One has died. Uh, we were not able to get parts. It was gonna cost us well over $100,000 to get it replaced. So it didn't make sense to put $100,000 into something that we were gonna eventually have to phase out. So that, we were able to get that contract, uh, uh, worked up and, uh, signed by Dr. Bridges and Reverend Privet. The next is, uh, between Muter Construction and the Board of Education for the window replacement at Carver Elementary. Uh, just like I previously shared, was, this one was 419,000 dollars and two, 419,234 dollars. This one here is for the replacement of all aluminum windows around the entire campus except for the new wing that was added on to Carver, uh, previously. Next contract is also with Muter Construction. Uh, they, they wanted a contract for West Edge Cone's window replacement as well, which is gonna eliminate all those old metal windows that were single-pane and replace those with double-pane insulated windows. Uh, this contract here was 481,280 dollars. And last contract that we had, um, was between the Board of Education and Envirocon. Envirocon is our company that monitors our air conditioning and heating controls. So the systems that we have in place, they service those for us. Uh, we pay them a fee a little over $1,000 per month, but they come out once a month, monitor our system, make any changes or corrections. Uh, they help us troubleshoot our systems and work out anything that we need to order. Uh, that one was 12,324 dollars. Uh, and as you can see, uh, some of these pictures, uh, that, uh, air, air handle on top of that building, that's the one on top of Martin Academy. This has to show some of the age, um, on these, um, air conditioning systems. Uh, the one to the right is the one, I believe, is at, uh, Phillips. So it's past its lifetime. Uh, last one, the one to the far right, that's the one at, uh, Stocks, which we just had that contract come through. Uh, it's an older system, rusted out. Um, it gave us fits this past summer to keep it running. Uh, we've, just that one chiller to the left, we spent $65,000 this summer between freon and parts to get that one back up and running. So they become a money pit really quick with trying to get parts. And it's, that one there is 27 years old. So the life of them is expected to be anywhere from 15 to 20, so we're past that. And the one to the, uh, right of that one, you can see the piping is rusted out. Um, this one here, I believe, is at Southwest Edge Cone. So our stuff is, is some older systems. Uh, we do the best we can to keep them running. Um, but we're at the point now where we can start getting these changed out and replaced. Any questions?
Just me, I don't know if it matters, but in, um, 6.53, the, um, second little paragraph, it's got, um, the owner, between the owner and contractor for GW Carver Elementary School and then later, but it's for West Edge Cone, and it says West Edge Cone under the scope of services.
Yes, that one is supposed to be West.
Yes, sir. All right. Okay.
Reverend Privet, if I might. So.
Yes.
Mr. Williams, these are the contracts that, that were entered into by the superintendent and the chair pursuant to the authority granted to give advance approval, right?
Yes.
They need to come back to the board for final approval, for ratification. So there needs to be action taken to approve the contract. And if that, that one needs to be corrected.
Okay.
You know, so they need to approve that as corrected. Um, because that was, it, it needs, it does need board action. It just comes after the facts.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
It has nothing to do with the contract itself.
Okay.
Um, what I'm hearing you say as we're installing the new units and things like that, do we have, uh, our, I'd say, employees following, uh, when these, uh, new units are installed? Are they, are we training anybody that's already on the staff to know what to look for or look at, uh, while they're installing them?
Yes. Okay, so, okay, so here's how this, uh, PDC works. PDC is, is our agent, so to speak. Um, so we, whatever fee we pay them, they monitor and supervise the project from start to finish. And they do a final, they do a, like a punch list inspection on each one of these systems before contractors pay. So then they turn around, they train our staff on the preventive maintenance, on to keep up with the system. So one, they, they design it. Two, they oversee the install and make sure that the contractor installs it correctly. And then three, they train our staff, our HBAC staff, on how to maintain or pre, do preventive maintenance on them so that we won't board the warranty or be stuck with a piece of equipment that doesn't function correctly.
Yes, my question.
Yes, indeed. Other questions, comments?
Have a question. Can we move these down to items for action now and approve them tonight?
Yes, I mean, I think they can be approved. Um, that is.
Yep.
Dr. B, you need to make that amendment right.
Yes, if you would, um, I mean, technically, the, the board would need to vote to amend the agenda to move this as an action item.
Uh huh.
Oh.
Okay. All right.
I have a motion that we move this to the action items.
6.5.1, for 2.3, 4. Okay. Yep, is there a second?
Second.
Has been motion and second that, uh, 6.1, 4.1, 2.3, 4 be moved down to action for an action item. You've heard that motion for the amendment of the agenda. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion? And those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Mel's, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worceley, aye.
Anne Kent, aye.
And that motion passed, so we moved it to the, uh, amend the agenda. Okay. That's gonna be, uh, number?
8.11.
8.11, okay.
8.12, B. 8.13, B. 8.14, B.
Okay. Okay. Uh, board members Worceley and Scott, did y'all, and, and Kent, did y'all get those, get that? Amending the, and, and?
Yes, sir.
And the numbers where it will be 8.11, B. 13, 14, all the way down. Okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 7.1, Policy Committee, Ms. Pittman?
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Education members, and Dr. Bridges. Uh, the ECPS Policy Committee met November 1st to review the policy revisions as presented by the follow-up updates from the North Carolina School Board Association. Uh, the revisions that we reviewed and discussed are both considerable and minor, uh, in nature. And as usual, the updates are noted by strike-throughs as well as inserts, uh, in the applicable policies. Are there any questions regarding any of the policies as shared?
Questions? No.
We have so many.
A bunch, a bunch. But I do appreciate the custom update.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My point is, I'm happy that most of them were recommendations rather than complete changes. You know, and laws change.
Right.
Because that makes a difference.
Okay.
Uh, we had one policy that was 43 years old. Um, wording in that policy, but, uh, it got corrected. I was not happy. I said, we, we got a policy, we working on 43 years? Okay, but anyway.
Okay.
Uh, other than that, it's very interesting reading. I, I read it a while. Because I felt like we needed to do that.
Okay. Any, any, anything from you on the minor changes? Is, they're okay as well?
Yes, sir, they're just fine. Usually, um, just punctuation, updates to legal references and the like.
All right, if there are any further questions or discussions, if not, I need a motion.
Let me, I, I got.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
The attendance policy.
That's number?
440.
Okay.
I mean, 4400, I'm sorry. When I was going through that, it, I know we've got a 10-day, I think we still have a 10-day semester and 20-day year, um, attendance policy.
For athletics?
Just for athletics.
That's.
So that's not for regular students?
For regular students, impacting them in what way?
Failing class, failing the class, if they're, if they're have 14 unexcused acts.
Yes.
Within a, um.
Semester.
Semester.
But where is it? I, I couldn't find it in, in the policy.
That may be in the grading policy.
I, um, Kent, see, I was just wondering, because I was looking for it. And I know that, that the only time that a school were athletes.
Okay.
Maybe we'll look to that Ms. Pittman for sure that it's.
Okay.
Because it should be.
Okay, you're gonna come back to that? Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, then do we hear a motion?
I have a motion that we approve the policy as a grant that was the question that makes it. Fellas' favor, please.
Favor.
Would you, you can provide it, Mr. B?
Absolutely.
Right. Second, is there a second?
Second.
Lily Worceley, second.
Okay, has been motioned second for the approval of the 8. uh, I'm sorry.
7.
7. uh, oh, yes, 7.1. You've heard the motion and second and a further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Mel's, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worceley, aye.
Anne Kent.
Margaret Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Anne Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. All right.
Reverend Privet?
Yes.
I'd just like to thank Ms. Pittman for keeping us in line. She's always, uh, sharing the policy so we can stay current, uh, like they're paying for it. And thanks to. I'd just like to thank Ms. Pittman for keeping us in line, she's always, uh, sharing the policy so we can stay current, uh, like her mentor, and thanks to Policy Committee for their hard work.
All right, y'all did a lot of work, absolutely. Okay, all right, moving along to, let's see, eight point one A.
Yeah, so there is a fundraiser for Harvard, this is PBIS fundraiser, Piggy Weekly, to sell homemade Lucky Pops for dollar, November twenty-ninth through December tenth.
Any questions or comments on that one? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, our motion that we approve is this is consent. Our motion that we approve.
Second.
It has been motioned second for the approval of eight point one A. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion or questions? Then those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
That motion passed unanimously, eight point one B.
I'm gonna make a motion on that. Wilson and Johnson.
Dr. Wilson. Okay.
Eight point one B, approval of resolution adopting new election district boundaries. We'll ask, um, Attorney Stagner, she would share information and kind of bring us up to speed.
I stay here, would you like me to go?
Either is fine with me.
Uh, either's fine.
So, as you all know, you have, uh, you've reviewed alternate maps for redistricting that's required to bring your districts into, um, population balance after the census. And the map was approved by the board to put forward for public hearing, it was put forward for public hearing, and there were no comments. So tonight, you are being presented with a resolution to formally adopt that redistricting plan. It will be provided to the Board of Elections in the county to, um, alert them, so that they can alert voters that they have changed the districts in which they may live. Um, it has got the map attached to it as well as the census geography of the blocks that they've got the census, um, count, counting, uh, the smallest areas within which, uh, people accounted for the census, and that allows, if there was any confusion in the maps, uh, allow them to, allow them to determine the outline of the districts. And in addition, Blake Esselstone, who came, um, and spoke with you, the demographer, will send electronic map files so that they can import it to the GIS system. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the process, but, uh, this is the final step to approve the board's redistricting.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, do we hear a motion?
Our motion that we approve the red redistricting, uh, plan.
Second. It has been motioned second for the approval of resolution adopting the new election district boundaries and the plan. Heard that motion and second and a further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. Eight point two B.
We'll ask Mr. Hayes if he'll come forward for eight point two B, eight three B, eight four B, um, all related to technology.
Greetings, Board Chair, Board Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bridges, and School Board Members. The item for action before you is the request for approval of purchase of cellular bus Wi-Fi systems, including installation as a sole source for the estimated total cost of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-one cent. The administration is requesting approval for the purchase of cellular bus Wi-Fi systems, including installation under sole source exemption. We have utilized this vendor for the Wi-Fi systems currently installed in our buses for continuing compatibility purpose. We wish to utilize the same vendor for the Wi-Fi systems to be installed in our buses as outlined in the Emergency Connectivity Grant. The grant awarded, um, from the Emergency Connectivity Fund is the funding source for the purchase.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the cellular phone bus Wi-Fi system, including installation as a sole source for an estimated cost of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents.
Margaret Scott, second.
You've heard the motion and the second for the approval of eight point two B. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, eight point three B.
Uh, this item for action before you is the request for board approval of purchase of Lenovo touchscreen Chromebooks for grades K through two for an estimated total cost of two hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and sixty-nine cent. The administration is requesting approval for the purchase of five hundred and forty-six Lenovo touchscreen Chromebooks. The Chromebooks will be used by students as part of ECPS's digital learning initiative. The grant awarded for the Emergency Connectivity Fund is the funding source for the purchase.
Any further discussion or questions, comments? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a.
Margaret Scott.
Motion that we approve the purchase of the Lenovo Chromebooks for grades K two for an estimated cost of two hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and sixty-nine cent.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of eight point two B. Heard that motion and second, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, eight point four B.
This item for action before you is the request for board approval of the purchase of Lenovo Chromebooks for grades three through twelve for an estimated total cost of six hundred twenty thousand, sixty-five dollars. The administration is requesting approval for the purchase of nineteen hundred Lenovo Chromebooks. The Chromebooks will be used by students as part of ECPS's digital learning initiative. The grant awarded from the Emergency Connectivity Fund is the funding source for the purchase.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I need a motion.
I make Margaret Scott, motion to approve the purchase of the Lenovo Chromebooks for grades three to twelve for the estimated total cost of six hundred twenty-three thousand, sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Lily Worsley, second.
Motion and second for the approval of eight point four B. You heard that motion and second and a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, eight point five B. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hayes, while you're going, um, I, I, I heard with interest a couple of systems that found some, some Chromebooks and stuff down at the pawn shops. We haven't had any of that.
No, we haven't been contacted by any pawn shops. Luckily, when ours are missing, we can lock them down, and they come up with a message that says, this has been locked by ECPS.
Okay.
It can't be used.
Okay.
So the pawn shop can't use them.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and they actually had the school district's name still there. Yep. That's good, that's all right, good. Eight point five B.
Eight point five B, um, this is again, each month, we have to do this, approval to uphold the mask mandate that all students grade pre-K through thirteen, staff and visitors be required to wear masks in all group transportation, including buses, vans, driver education cars, on the school grounds and inside of all ECPS facilities regardless of vaccination status. So again, I bring this forward to the board, um, each month as we kind of continue to make the decision about mask wear.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Margaret Scott, motion to approve or uphold the mask mandate that all students grade PK through thirteen, staff and visitors be required to wear masks in all group transportation, including buses, vans, drivers, education cars, et cetera, on school grounds and inside all ECPS facilities regardless of vaccination status.
Second, Ann Kent, second.
It has been motioned second for the approval of eight point five B. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, eight point six B.
We'll ask Ms. Ote to come forward for approval of twenty-one, twenty-two, traditional college and ozone calendar.
Hello again. So, I'd like to request approval to amend both the traditional ozone calendar, I'm sorry, the traditional ozone calendar and the early college calendar to change Friday, November twelfth, Monday, November twenty-second, and Tuesday, November twenty-third to optional teacher workdays. As started to be mentioned, she, she discussed those in her, um, superintendent updates, but I, of course, um, am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions? Comments? Hearing none, then I need a motion.
Make a motion to amend, uh, two, two, two hundred twenty-one, two hundred twenty-two calendar, or transfer, transfer traditional school, and as the zone approved, and it's called early college.
Second motion.
It has been motioned second for the approval of eight point six B. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. All right, let's see, what do we do with eight seven here? Eight point seven B?
Yes, he has quite a few, so we'll ask Mr. Williams if he'll come forward, um, to work through these that are posted, eight point seven B, eight point eight B, eight point nine B, eight ten B.
Eight seven is the progressive design?
Eight point seven B, that's the chiller replaced box.
Yeah, I don't have that. Are we bumping the other one?
Yes, we can keep going.
Okay. All right, good evening, Board Chair, Madam Board Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bridges, fellow board members. Coming for you again, uh, seeking approval of a contract between Edgecombe County Board of Education and Progressive Design Collaboration, because we didn't do those two contracts. Comfort. So those two, that's fine, those two right there.
So eight point seven B, okay.
Yes, sir.
At this one. Okay.
Is that right? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Um, coming for you for approval of a contract between Edgecombe County Board of Education and Progressive Design Collaborations and the, um, HVAC design fees in the amount of two hundred and six thousand dollars, six hundred ninety-five using ESER funds. Uh, Progressive Design is the company we selected for our RFQ to do all of our design work, uh, for all of our HVAC needs that we have using the ESER funds.
Any questions or comments on that one? Eight point nine B, you've heard that motion, uh, I mean, hearing none, I need a motion.
Make a motion that we accept. Eight point, what's that?
It's eight point seven B.
Eight point seven B, okay, seven B. It has been motioned properly second for the approval of, uh, eight point seven B. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion? Then those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, eight point eight B.
Okay, I come for you again, asking for, uh, asking for approval to authorize Board Chair, uh, Raymond, Mr. Raymond Privet and Superintendent Dr. Bridges to sign contracts for design fees up to half a million dollars. Yes. What we're asking is, the same way we did with the, um, contracts for, the contracts once we wore them out in the, in between board meetings, so that we can continue to move forward and work and get our stuff ordered is, what is permission. Uh, but we will come back at the following board meeting like we do, doing tonight and, um, bring the contract before you.
And that's eight point ten, you've heard that, uh, any, any further discussion or questions?
That's eight point eight.
Eight point eight, okay, all right, that's it.
The other two were taken off.
They were taken off, that's exactly right, they were, all right.
Our motion that we approve eight point.
Okay. Motion and second for the approval of eight point eight B. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion or questions? Then those in.
I have a question, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair, what is that contract up to, how many million?
It's half a million.
Yeah, for half a million.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further unreadiness? Hearing none, then those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously.
Yeah, so now, remember, um.
We have to go back, right?
Yeah, six point five, one, two, three, and four, we move those for items for action. And so now, there'll be eight point nine B, eight ten B, eight eleven B, eight twelve.
Okay.
I come for you again for another owner contract agreement, uh, between Edgecombe County Board of Education and Allred Mechanical to replace, uh, the chiller at WA Potillo Middle School for an estimated cost of three hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Again, this is money we're using from ESER to replace these, um, systems.
Any further question, any further questions or discussions on that? If not, then I here need a motion.
Move, accept, eight point four, nine, eight point nine.
Mm-hmm.
Second motion.
It has been motioned second for the approval of eight point nine B. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. What's the other one?
Eight ten B.
Eight ten B, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
This was an owner contract between, agreement between Edgecombe County Board of Education and Muter Construction to install replacement windows at GW Carver Elementary School for an estimated total of four hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Move, accept, eight point ten B.
Second motion.
Motion and second for the approval of eight point ten B. Heard that motion and second and a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, where are we, eight point eleven B?
Great. Okay. All right, next is an owner contract agreement between the Edgecombe County Board of Education and Muter Construction to install replacement windows at West Edgecombe Middle School for an estimated total cost of four hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Any further discussion or questions on that one? Hearing none, those in favor of approval for the approval of eight point eleven B, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
I'm sorry, we didn't get it.
Margaret Scott, aye.
We need a motion.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, let's go back, okay. All right, I need.
I also love.
Okay, there you go. Fast. Okay.
I know you were calling for my name and I wanted to say, well.
Okay. All right, you've heard that motion and second and a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann, Ann Kent, aye.
And now that motion passed unanimously, wow. Mr. Williams, you're spending a lot of money here this evening. All right, the next one, sir.
All right, last one now. Please, um, owner, we have an owner contract agreement between Edgecombe County Board of Education and Envirocon Incorporated for annual maintenance services for temperature control systems beginning, uh, October eighteenth of twenty twenty-one and ending October seventeenth of twenty twenty-two for an estimated total cost of twelve thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Any further discussion or questions on eight point, uh, twelve B?
Our motion that we approve, eight point twelve B.
Okay.
Second.
It has been motioned second that we're, for the approval of eight point twelve B. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion or? You've heard that motion as second and a further discussion or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in, let it be known by stating your name, saying? Aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Okay.
We mail us aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. All righty, and we're back on track. All right, now we're down to, Dr. Wilson, if you'll send us into closed session?
Yes, sir. Our motion under the North Carolina Open Bookings Law, Section one, four, three, three one eight, eleven eight, one, eight three, and eight six, to go into closed session to consider personnel matters, to consult with attorney, to preserve attorney-client privileged information, and to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, twenty USC, one, two, three, two G, and the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under GS one fifteen C, dash three, nineteen through three, twenty-one.
Step second.
Second.
It has been motioned and properly second for, to be, for us to go into closed session, you've heard that motion as second and further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying? Aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
We mail us aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
Margaret Scott, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, let us take five.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.1.2 Extracurricular Activities. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve 10.1.2 Extracurricular Activities.
Second motion.
You've heard that motion, a second for the approval of 10.1.2. You've heard that motion, a second if there any further discussion or questions. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye.
Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Wee Melas, aye. Evelyn Johnson, aye.
Lilly Worsley, aye.
Margaret Dodd, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously, 10.2.2 Extracurricular Activities. Hearing none, items brought by the board, let's see. Dr. B.
Yeah, I just, two things. So I've had a request, it's not been formal, but just wanted to hear from the board about using our facilities. I know we've had a few requests for facilities for students who have passed away for funerals, and I think we have approved those. I'm now starting to get requests related to things that are not funerals, and I didn't know if we were okay with that. One in particular is Southwest Edge Home High School Cougar Club wanting to use the facility for like a banquet and things like that. So I know at one time we had stopped allowing organizations to use the facility due to COVID. Didn't know where the board was with that decision, if we're still there or if there needs to be some change in the decision.
Open for discussion.
Okay, if they use, say for an example, they want to use cafeteria, they are not permitted to go in the kitchen area, are they?
I don't think so, and most of the time they're not doing that. It's usually food broken in, so they're usually not doing that, using the kitchen space.
Okay, so that's understood, that if they use that. But if they want to use the gym for something, I don't have a problem, because they probably need some space, you know, for their attendance.
Right, and in the past, we've allowed it. We stopped during COVID, and so that's the last word that our principals have heard. And so I just wanted to come back to the board and see if we're ready to open that back up and allow people to use it other than funerals, because that's the only thing we've approved. It has been our students for closing funerals.
How do the principals feel?
Mr. Chair, this is Lilly Worsley.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a concern, because I have a question concerning the cleaning behind them, the sanitizing the building after the use of outside people, other people.
And normally...
Who would be responsible for making sure that the building is sanitized?
Yeah, so normally in the paperwork, they have to pay for a custodian. So that's part of the fee, is paying for a custodian to clean the building. And for custodian to be there, they usually open, lock up the building, and lock it back.
And what was this, the Cougar Club?
Uh-huh, it was the Cougar Club.
Cougar Club? I didn't know, I don't know what Cougar Club is. Is it one of the Cougar Clubs? The football club?
I think they were having a banquet or something.
And that's what I was thinking, wasn't too many, maybe.
I don't know, I can get more information. I didn't want to even go there unless I knew you all were open to folks coming back into the building. You were going to ask a question.
I was asking, how do the principals really feel about it?
Yeah, I don't think that they have a problem with it. You know, they may have some of the same concerns that Ms. Worsley mentioned about the cleanliness of it, but normally a part of that package is you have to pay for a custodian. And again, we can say no, I just didn't want to say that on my own. Well, we've done some other things, I'd just rather you all weigh in on that.
That program meets, supports Southwest through their football program.
It does.
And when you look at, because at some point in time, we're just going to have to do what we do and just make sure we clean up and everything like that, because you can't get back to some sense of normalcy if you don't step out, if it's something messed up, you know, step back. But when you've got people supporting and wanting to help your school, that is hard to say no.
I think part of the, one of the things that I would second suggest is that in addition to the requirement of the custodians, I think you need some, it's a lot of work to do the sanitizing and clean up after, more than just locking the building. I think we're going to have to add something into that for him or her, for them, really. It should be more than one to sanitize and clean up.
This is Margaret, that was my thought too, Ms. Lilly said that, because it's different for them just having to sweep the floor and that kind of stuff to clean the place back up. But now with COVID, you know, you've got to go through and they're going to use the machine to get to sanitize the whole thing, so that's going to require more time of our maintenance people to be able to clean that, because you just can't, you know, let it, just, you know, just clean the floor down, because you have other folks, children come back in after in advance, and then someone was in there who may have had the virus, and then it starts to spread. And our children, you know, put themselves in a hard way, because of that. I'm, poor people didn't ever use our facility, but right now, I can see funerals, because I know that's something that can't be prevented, and you know, you have to have a large place to be able to accommodate if you've got a funeral going on. But from some of these other events, I'm not in agreement with it at this time.
Could I ask something?
I don't have a problem with, I don't think it's that much with the cleaning, with the spraying and stuff.
I was going to say, isn't it normal that they would have available the, I call it bombing, but it's way straight.
Yeah, they got a machine.
They have a machine, each school has one of those. I don't know if it's written anywhere, and it may be under the COVID policy, whatever you do, but we, I would, if we support it, then I would suggest that that be emphasized, that the janitor service and whoever's using the place may need to have to pay the janitors, because they have to do that anyway, don't they? Yeah, I include some extra, make sure that they go in and bomb that area that they use. They will have to do that.
Okay, anything else?
Ms. Kent, Ms. anybody else up there?
I just, I don't mind them using the facilities. My concern would be the cleanliness and making sure that we compensate our staff for doing the cleaning. So if, I mean, maybe we need to increase the custodial fee. We want them to do a good job, but we don't want to take advantage of our employees either. So I, you know, I would just, I like the facilities very clean, but I like the people who are doing it to be compensated fairly, when they're doing this extra work for us.
Okay. I don't recall if we voted to not use the facilities.
I don't remember that.
I don't think we did, I think we just agreed. Okay, so if we agree that they could, I don't know if we need to, maybe Rose, look at the paperwork and maybe add something related to sanitizing for COVID. We certainly don't have that.